This is Town of Dayton's Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting. Wednesday, February 28th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. This is the Daytonville School Cafeteria, 1250 R. Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass., 02715. This is a public input may be provided using the following method. Contact our office at Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, Board of Selectmen@Dayton-MassMA.gov to provide input prior to the meeting. This is going to be continually played on Dayton Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdayton. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This has been revised, the original posted on February 26th at 4:03 PM. If anybody is recording this, you have to make that announcement if you're going to stand up and have a comment, or you're just sitting in the audience, you have to make that announcement that you are indeed recording this.
I'll be recording.
Oh, great, thank you.
I'll be recording.
Thank you.
I'm doing live.
Sure, okay.
What was your question?
All right. What we're go-
Your question?
Thank you, sir. The meeting is going to be called to order.
Good evening. Leonard Hall is present.
Nicole Mello is present.
And Peter Karen present. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask you if, right after the Pledge of Allegiance, if you could stay standing, because we lost some friends and neighbors this week, and we would like to make an announcement about those people.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, the following members of our community have passed. I ask that you keep them in your thoughts and condolences to their family. Susan Costa, Cynthia Davy, Judith Demers, Paul J. Kula Baba, Kula Baba.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. First thing on tonight's agenda is a schedule of appointments for, and the one thing that we do have, which is going, I'm going to ask to be tabled, is a poll hearing by, by, which is one, installed jointly on Chestnut Street. Anyway, can I have a motion to table that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table the poll hearing petition number 30894793.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Next on to new business. We're going to talk about the police chief hiring process. We're going to review, discuss an act open warrant for the annual town meeting, and review, discuss an act police office for the presidential primary election. So, Mike, police chief process, hiring process, do you-
Yes. I, yeah, we're here, I, like, we're here this evening. We're here this evening to discuss with the board potential updated, like, improved paths, like, for the police chief hiring process. Like, I think it goes without saying that we have all really heard the feedback, we've seen the feedback, and we've listened to the feedback that the town's been receiving over the last week. I, like, and Chairman, really, did you want to kick everything off in that process?
Sure. There will be a time for public input, which I know that's why everybody is here this evening, and I will make that announcement of how it's going to proceed when we get to that point. I have something that we typed up, that, a process that we typed up today, and I'd like to read that to you this evening. As I mentioned earlier this week, we, as town officials, place great importance in ensuring a fair, transparent, and qualified-based process for the appointment of Dayton's next Chief of Police by the Board of Selectmen. All residents should have confidence in the hiring process. It should go without saying that all of us never expected to fill the role of Chief of Police twice in approximately two years. To that end, I would like to thank Acting Chief Nicholas and the Dayton Police Department for all their continued efforts. The Board of Selectmen is here tonight to begin identifying areas where it may be able to improve the process. It has always been important to us to approach this process with the town's best interests at heart, informed by modern-day best hiring practices with the seriousness and responsibility that that, that the process deserves, not with any underlying aim to approach the process with a specific outcome. As we know, the law enforcement profession has continued to modernize in ways that we never would have imagined. As we approach this process, it has also been important to, for the town to engage in a consultant, well-respected in dozens of Massachusetts communities, to perform a candidate evaluation and assessment functions for our search. The Board of Selectmen have approved, have approved the current police chief hiring process in scope in late November. There is a lot that we have, do not have the ability to share, because we cannot discuss the private, personal information of any candidate. What I can say is that we have engaged in a process that was fair and consistent for all candidates, internal and external alike. I do want to make one thing very clear. The town administrator and I take responsibility and agree that improvements need to be, need and should be made. Moving forward, an updated course of action will not only address recent procedural-related questions that may have existed, but will also be aimed at fostering greater transparency and the confidence in our efforts. We owe it to our community to get this process right. So with that being said, you will note that the town administrator has included in everyone's packet some ideas for us to begin the discussion that I imagine will take place through tonight and the next several meetings. With that, I'm happy to open it up to the town administrator and to the rest of the Board of this, for discussion.
You know, like, and thank you, Chairman. And I just want to take really a quick moment to echo Chairman Karen's comment and to share that I also take responsibility, like, for the confusion that has really come as a result of the process. Anyone who has worked with me know that I take so, so much pride, and I take so personally the work that we do for, that we, that we do for our town, our community, like, in both, in both times really good, like, and also those, and also those times, also those times that are more challenging. In terms of this process, I, in terms of, in terms of, in terms of the process, I, I will be my biggest critic in terms of the part of the process that have to be updated based on the Board's feedback, and I look, and I look forward to working with and for the members of the Board to continue moving the process forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Mello, do you have any questions or concerns right now?
Yes, may I speak? This is probably a bad time to mention, I don't like public speaking, but we're here and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this. I'd like to start with speaking about the matters that have transpired. As many of you have noticed, I've remained silent over social media over the weekend. Anyone that knows me, I am not a keyboard warrior. I'm going to say what I want to say, and I'm going to say it to your face. That's just how I was raised. I have instead spent the weekend reading residents' concerns. I was in contact with Paul Reynolds, who chose instead of turning to social media, brought the concern straight to the source, and was invaluable resource, and I'm truly thankful for his insight. What the residents want and what they feel truly means a great deal to me, and always plays a role in the decisions that I make. Comments made about the town administrator and the human resource officer are uncalled for, as we are the Board. We oversee them. All criticism should be directed towards us. As we dive deeper into the process, any missteps that we have taken as a Board, I take full responsibility for, and will work tirelessly with the Board to mediate these issues. Lastly, I apologize for the distress that this situation has caused. There's just two other things that I would just like to address real quick that I feel are important to get off my chest. I had never promised this position to anyone. That is a straight-out lie. I would never do that. That's completely unprofessional. And that puts both myself and that individual in a very difficult place if I had done that. Secondly, I just want to acknowledge the officer that was involved, Souza. He is an officer too, and I please ask that we are respectful for, towards him as well, because he did not do anything wrong in this situation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Hall?
A lot has transpired over the last several months, and there were missteps. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, I too must apologize for that. But we also represent the people. You're here this evening. We represent you. We are you. We respond to your feedback, your comments, and what you want. And we have a responsibility as representatives of you to defend and support what you feel and what you want for your town. And with that, I appreciate the input by the town on this matter, whether it be positive or negative, because from that, we work out our differences with transparency for the candidates, all the candidates who applied for the position. We will move forward. There will be another opportunity for the process to be corrected, improved upon, and done fairly for all members and all parties involved. We will learn from this, and we will move forward, and the community will be stronger for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. We're going to review, discuss an act open warrants for the annual town meeting, please.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to discuss the alternate choices and talk about any additional suggested choices about the hiring process?
Not at this time. We will get back to that, please. So is there a motion on the floor to open the town warrant for the annual town meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just have one question.
Yes.
We're going to go back and we're going to re-
Correct.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, I want to do it all together, a public input.
Okay, I, I second that then.
Okay. There's a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Review, discuss, and act police officers for the presidential primary election. Mr. Hall?
Yeah, like, just, just really quick, in accordance with the Votes Act, which was adopted by the legislature, I believe in a year and a half ago, the Board now needs to vote, like, the Board now needs to vote on the assignments of police officers, like, during election days. So, like, we do have an upcoming presidential primary election, like, on Tuesday, March 5th, like, and I, and I am recommending the detail of two police officers at our polling location at Dayton Elementary School.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is Mrs., is the town clerk here?
Yes.
Yes, she is here.
Would she come up and speak on that, please?
If necessary, sure.
Yeah, just to develop the fund-
She is making the request.
She is making the request?
Traditionally, the town clerk has, yes.
So, we, I have discussed with George Nichols, the, who we plan on bringing in for the presidential primary, and we have started, we have already talked about this process, and he had reached out to his team to see who would be working for the presidential primary.
Okay.
I do have a couple of questions in regards to that. The first question being, the money for that, was that already budgeted in your-
Yes, that is in our budget, correct.
And secondly, will there be one officer outside and one officer inside?
Correct.
And thirdly, at the end, how will they be a part of the process of transferring the ballots to town?
They transfer our ballots and our machines first thing in the morning, and they are the, they are in custody of our ballots as well, and those are always in their custody, and then we bring, after we count and tabulate, then we give them the custody to bring back to the town hall.
Thank you.
And which is sealed by them. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Does it not have to be a police officer for each precinct, like, the second ballot one?
Not, no, it does not have to be unless it's a different location. We've always been, from what I understand, we've always used the two, one inside and one outside, and it has been budgeted for those two.
All right, is there a motion on the floor?
No.
Oh, is somebody else on?
The former clerk.
Oh, hi.
Am I good?
Yes. Thank you.
I was town clerk for 18 years, and I find Sheriff's doing a great job, I mean, he talks, he's doing a great job. But there's a couple things I just don't understand. In my 18 years as town clerk, I never had to give the okay to the Board of Selectmen because I'm a police official.
So, as I mentioned, the law changed a year and a half ago, like, and the law changed that.
What they changed was we didn't have to use the police officer. What I'm trying to say here is that I don't care if you're the police chief. I never went to the Board of Selectmen and said, "Our Board is only got two officers in the red office." It didn't work that way. As a police official, she works with the police chief, figures out what she needs. And in all my years, and even when I was there, I worked out, and not detailed with me, I always had two officers for each precinct, and now there's four, ready, please, and one outside. And I said, right now, for the presidential election, the state election in November, I had five, and that still wasn't enough, because in the last few years, it's been very, I'm going to say nasty out there, okay? We had people arguing, and we needed a police officer to just handle the people out there campaigning and voting. So, I just wanted to let you know that I, I, I'm trying to understand something that you got going on.
This is just a primary election?
I understand that.
Okay.
I did say the setup state election, but I always had three officers for my primary election.
Okay.
You know, and I do three precincts. Because I didn't have that one police officer, one precincts, and everything in the dark, I mean, you do what you want. I'm just saying that there's no idea that, and I never had an issue, and, and like I said, as a police official, I never went to the Board of Selectmen and said, "I need two officers to do that."
Right.
You know, I mean, because that's not a working relationship.
Right.
And, you know, yes, you go to the Board, and I go to the Board, every Board that was out there, but you're governed by the state, okay? Whether it's state elections, state, and the liberty, you are governed by what they say though, you know? And what they say you miss, whether the Board believes you can do this way, it doesn't work that way. It's what the state says.
Okay.
Right? And I just, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could I have a follow-up question with Mrs. Madeiras, and just a point?
She's not listening.
Sorry?
No, go ahead.
Just a point, we have both of the former clerks here this evening. Has the state set a standard as to the number of police officers required by precincts?
Mark, that is me.
Ms. Madeiras, that, that was directed at you.
Oh, I didn't.
Because I, I, or-
I used three.
But no, no, is that the recommendation of the state?
No.
Okay. No, thank you.
Me too, and it's, you know, town group, you know, we have over 6,000, you know, voters. I mean, I'll never forget the last state election, I mean, the line was out the door all the way down to the, 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 yeah, yeah, plus, I mean, maybe they're not just, if you've got that, if you have a ride home, you possibly bring in a big flash, you know, up, and people right there, but still, you don't even notice it there, because the cars coming in the house, the dock, and people standing in line, so there are all of them. Then I had two inside, and then we had one, another one outside, two both, and that was the intention, now, a primary, and it was that then, obviously.
Okay, we're discussing the primary, and, and if, if you think that it should be three, and the town clerk thinks it should be, be three, I don't think there's an issue with that.
I, I think that also that the police should be able to weigh in, I mean, they-
It's a town law, I mean, a state law, and if they want to weigh in thinking that there should be four, it's going to be done, that's out there, not me.
No, but Sheriff wants what he needs.
Right. Yes.
But really kind of, I mean, the standard is what he needs. And, yeah, but this is, you know, it's all, you know, it's just to table it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we table this. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? I, I can't make the motion, somebody else has to, I'm sorry.
I have a motion.
No, we're going to table it.
Can't table it? So, um, procedural thing, so it's, the Votes Act says that the selectmen now be appointed as the authority of election, the police officer. So, all you have to do is say, you know, yes, we'll take whatever Sheriff represents, but you need, the law says you need at least one police officer at each public office, so Sheriff, you know, on the head, you know, I might disagree, because I always wanted three as well, but appointing, you need at least one police officer, Sheriff has to two, so I recommend it's the town clerk's representation, so if you think it was great to watch.
Okay, okay. My mistake then.
Honestly, I feel we need to have more than one officer inside, due to the fact that three police officers, and to ensure the integrity of the election, you have to have officers watching the ballot, that is, so for you to try and look at, I think, reasons that one officer looking or trying to watch three ballot boxes is how you help it, the integrity of, especially a presidential election, needs to be ensured.
Okay. How many are you requesting, Sheriff?
I personally want three.
Okay.
I think we should go with three.
Then it's not an issue, we'll have three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm okay with that, but the only question I have is, is it in the budget?
It doesn't matter at this point.
I, um, I would get the budget, so if you can afford that, I'd say.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
They're saying that that's going to be safer.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the request for three officers for the presidential primary election.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Going to have the approval of the warrants, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Dayton pay the warrant for February 22nd, 2024. Item 35A-24, $122,105.07. Item 35B-24, $77,257.22.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the Town to make a motion that the Town of Dayton pay the warrant for February 29th, 2024. Item 36A-24, $136,319.25.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Oh, sorry. Item 36B-24, $213,623.22.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye. Okay, now comes the reason why everybody is here this evening. We are going to discuss the hiring process here, and then we will open it up to public input, and we'll go over the rules for public input as soon as we get, finish discussing the, the hiring process. Does somebody have an opinion? Mr. Hall, I know you do. You want to start?
Well, I, I want to throw out the two options that Mr. Mullen has shared with us, and open it up to any other options that the members of the Board may have. I believe the warrants, I mean, the agenda this evening says this is a discussion item, so no vote will be taken unless two members of the Board ask that a vote be taken. The town's general hiring policy essentially describes two avenues for the filling vacancies in department head positions. Under one approach, the Board of Selectmen would formally appoint a screening committee to conduct interviews, and then submit at least two finalists to the Board for its consideration, and consideration would include an interview before a vote. Under the other approach, rather than appointing a screening committee, the town administrator would be delegated primary responsibility for conducting a hiring process, working with appropriate personnel, and recommend the finalists to the Board.
Okay. Okay? This is another?
So, looking at the two options that we were presented with, from the town administrator, I just don't know enough about option two. If you could dive deeper into that, so I could have a better understanding of what that would mean.
Yes, no, I'd be happy to, like, and again, like, these, oh, yeah, like, I didn't also want to present any idea to the Board, that we only have, you know, two options here as well, like, we can have hybrid approaches, we can have, oh, yeah, like, I mean, oh, yeah, like, I really think we should, and the Board should, as a group, have a discussion about all these ideas. Like, in terms of, so, so with the packet, you'll note that under potential option two for consideration, I did, oh, yeah, like, I did just generally, I did just generally say, complete, complete Dayton Police Department needs assessment before an appointment of a preliminary screening committee. Like, and what, actually, like, I meant by that, like, what I meant by that is doing a needs assessment could provide us with an opportunity for all of us to be able to, to, for all of us really to be able to, like, take a step back from everything we've been through frankly, frankly during the last eight months, I can also, but also from the transitions that we've been through, like, of having two chiefs of police during the last two years. Like, we could bring a whole variety, we could bring a whole variety of stakeholders together, we have an opportunity to, like, engage a consultant to help with this, or we can do it on our own, but really to assess the leadership, our structure, oh, yeah, like, of the department, and I'm not talking about the people who were in leadership, who are in positions of leadership in the department, I'm talking about the structure itself, because the structure has actually evolved a lot in the last few years as well. Like, and I mean, again, we always, I'll say that we've done things a certain way in the department, however, like, as we're looking, and we need to, because we're required by law, uh, 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 excuse me, to adapt new laws in policing, you know, oh, yeah, what does everything we need to do, and how does a leadership, how does a leadership structure that we should have represent itself in 2024? Oh, yeah, like, again, though, like, I mean, like, it would have, and it would give us, like, it would, if this was something like it, could give us an opportunity together with the police union and any other, and other, and any other stakeholders, oh, yeah, like, really an ability to assess where we are, I can just try to better inform where we may want to go forward in terms of hiring a chief of police as well. And, like, again, like, it's not intended to, oh, yeah, to represent, you know, one specific proposal, but just an idea that we might have an ability, like, every, oh, yeah, like, I mean, every, everyone, like, everyone here may actually decide- oh, yeah, like, I mean, every month, everyone, like, everyone here may actually decide, oh, yeah, that option one is, like, the better course, but, like, I just wanted to provide some options, some options for the board and all of us, really, to review and consider to actually, like, actually kick off this whole updated process.
Okay. Um, is there any further discussion before I go on?
No, I, I see the, not in regards to adding additional ways to do the process, but I see the department assessment is totally separate than the process to hire the new chief. You know, one of the questions that I have, which is part of the needs assessment of the police department, is a position that is currently vacant, and that is of the lieutenant. And one of the things we need to keep in mind when we look at any additional positions for the police department, or filling the lieutenant's position, is the tough financial straits that this town is heading. Um, with that in mind, I, I think we need to take a look at what the police need before we decide to open it up and start going down a very involved process of hiring a new chief.
Okay.
Especially with the budget, like, weeks, budget presentations within weeks, um, of coming before us.
Sure. Uh, can I make it easy, as we can? Uh, back in November, the Board of Selectmen appointed three people to find a police chief. Uh, we were asked, at that time, to come back with four candidates. We put the, uh, out in the field requests for anybody who wanted to apply to be the next police chief of Dayton. We had twenty applicants apply. Out of those twenty, several were eliminated because they did not qualify. Uh, there were certain requirements that everybody had to meet in order to qualify, everything from what, um, college degree you had, to, uh, what rank you were. I don't have to get into what the requirements were at this time, they, they were all posted. The board that was assigned, uh, came back with, out of those twenty, about, uh, five candidates that we suggested go to the next phase. That next phase were interviews conducted by the candidate, uh, the selection committee. Those interviews were completed, and then they went to another round, where they were given essay questions to answer. These essay questions were everything from, um, what are your goals in life, to, um, I don't know, help me with a couple others that were on there. Anyway, there were nineteen essay questions. From that essay questions, we took it the next step, which was to have a company come in and take over from the board that was originated to find these candidates, and, um, do an assessment of those candidates that we had. Unfortunately, at that time, there were less than four candidates that made it to that next selection. So, we only had two that we found were qualified to go to the next, uh, assessment center. The, uh, the assessment center did everything from rapid-fire questions to these two chief candidates, to what would you do in a particular situation, uh, to doing role-playing, and with that came a one qualified candidate. The candidate then went, was supposed to go to the selectmen in the questions. Those questions were going to be new questions, and they were going to, uh, take a vote that night, or postpone it for a week so others could digest it, the, whether this candidate should be the next police of, of Chief of Police. By no means were the gentleman who was going to be assigned, uh, the gentleman who was going to, uh, be asked these questions at, by the Board of Selectmen, it was not a done deal. Uh, the selectmen could have voted not to have this person, and we were going back to the drawing board and trying to find somebody else. Uh, it never got to that point, please, um, it never got to that point. Uh, because of the uproar that happened, uh, I understand your frustration, and, uh, we were frustrated by some of the process as well. It, uh, unfortunately, I can't tell you what we know, and i- it's not fair to criticize everybody up here this evening because of being bound by the law of what we can share. The, assuming that that gentleman was approved, uh, he would have been the next police chief. Uh, we, the Board of Selectmen could have decided at that point not to appoint him, like I said, we were going back to the drawing board and started all over again. Uh, I seem to think that we are at that stage, that the public has spoken, uh, forget about media, it, the, uh, Facebook, it, it has nothing to do with what's decided, but the public has spoken, and they have told us they don't like the process, even though it was voted in, in November, and they don't like the, the option that was, was given. So, we have decided, or not have decided, but we are discussing here tonight what should be the next step, uh, between the three members that are here. Should that next step be, we throw everything away? Excuse me, I'll, I'll get back to public input when we have a chance.
I want to support public input, but I'm hoping that you can actually, a public input before you discuss the timing, should we actually take into consideration what we're all...
No decision is ma- being made tonight.
Okay, you're discussing.
Right, it's just, just discussing, discussing the process.
We have to be nice to have input while you're discussing.
Uh, sure, um, unfortunately...
And that's why we're waiting also, so we can all sit on it, so that this is not a matter that is just done hastily.
Uh, with that said, guys, this...
This is a matter we've been working on since November, so this did not come quickly.
There's going to be decorum here this evening, uh, we're not going to let it get out of control. Everybody who wants to speak will be given a chance to speak, please, um, but the process has to start all over again, uh, we all agree with that. Uh, I want to let you know that if we put this process in place again, there might not be four candidates that are going to come forward. Uh, this assessment committee that we hired is going to be a different assessment committee, we're not going to go with the same company that we used the first time. This, that's something that we're going to discuss this evening with the other members, uh, how we want to go with the next step. We, I, I will take your questions in a minute, please.
This is my, okay, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not...
We, we, we don't need that company to come in. Uh, we're, we're doing it by choice. Uh, okay, this is, this is going to stop. Uh, you guys can't talk over each other because we can't hear anything, and it's not fair to everybody else. Sure.
So, the assessment center was important to me personally, because I am not a subject matter expert on police, and I do not think it is great for me to look at a police's, um, resume, and then interview them and make a decision, like, who am I? I, that assessment center was some evidence that I could look at, it had a ranking that I could look at and have a better understanding. Um, these were other officers that were doing this, and it, that's why I felt like it was important, um, just so you have some understanding of why we went with the assessment center, not because it was willy-nilly, it was because it seemed like if we have subject matter specialists on that, that, that's, has more value than just us interviewing somebody one time and saying, yeah, your resume looks great. Um, that's all I want to add to that.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a second, please. You want to...
But, yeah, like, I just wanted to add that the firm Public Safety Consultants that was engaged, does this, like, dozens and dozens and dozens, uh, communities in Massachusetts, and not only do they do it for the position of Chief of Police, like, act, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, actually, many, many, many cities and towns like Dayton, we actually have a requirement for, to have an assessment center as part, uh, like, of our promotions, the for sergeants as well, so having an assessment center, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, in law enforcement, just by nature of the fact that we've, like, actually bargaining in together with the union, oh, like, here in our community, like, it is a best, it is a best, it is a best practice, uh, and we did hire a firm, uh, that is actually well-known and well-respected for doing this, so I just wanted, uh, like, I just wanted to add that, that we didn't make up, oh, yeah, like, I mean, an idea out of, oh, yeah, like, out of thin air to have it, uh, like, this is a best practice, we even do it in our own internal promotions within the department.
Where is that, what's the area on this part?
Yeah, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, I do want to be careful here, like, we do have, like, we do have a public comment portion in a little bit, and we do, we do have to have a discussion, like, in my opinion, between the board about the process that we want to go and have, oh, yeah, like, and have going forward.
Right. Um, with, with all that said, oh, Lenny, I'm sorry, you wanted something to add?
Yes. On January twenty-ninth, if you review the tape, at the fifty-minute mark of that tape, I specifically asked Mr. Mullen to review the format for the selection of the police chief. That format was not followed to the letter as it was voted on, on the twenty-ninth, because what was supposed to happen was that the select, the company was supposed to send before us a maximum of four candidates based on what was submitted to them. Secondly, they were to rank those candidates, not eliminate people because they didn't feel they were qualified. The request was four, not one. Secondly, in addition to ranking them, they were to write a narrative about each one of them. That didn't happen. That is my biggest concern. In addition, and Mr. Higgins is here this evening to confirm this, there were multiple open-meeting law violations that occurred. As we go forward in the process, it's not just a case of coming up with steps that we're going to follow, but assurances that those steps will be followed, and in this case, and Mr. Higgins, correct me if I'm wrong, to the letter of the law. Thank you.
Okay. I am recommending at this time that the process be, is going to be reevaluated. We are not ready to vote on any one candidate, we're not ready to vote on the exact process that will take place. Uh, certainly, you will have some input and be able to give us feedback as to how we should proceed with that. But with that said, I'm going to open this up to the public for their input. Uh, there's going to be some ground rules, and one of the things is, you're not going to talk over each other, uh, we'll cancel the meeting. Uh, it just can't happen, it's not fair to anyone if, if somebody has an opinion and somebody else is trying to talk over them. Uh, so, please use a little decorum. The second thing is, everybody's going to be limited to two minutes to, uh, speak on whatever they want to speak about with this process. Uh, you can say what you like, uh, it's your two minutes, you're entitled. Uh, these two minutes will be strictly adhered to. Karen, our secretary, is going to, uh, time everyone, uh, when the two minutes is up, it, it's up. Uh, the second, the third thing is, we, we're going to limit the first part to Dayton residents only. Uh, with that said, the, Dayton residents will speak, we'll continue with the meeting, but we will probably take a five-to-ten-minute break before we open it up to the rest of the public. Um, if, if anybody disagrees with that, I'll, I'll take the public input right now. Uh, if, if you disagree with that process, by, by all means, you can speak. Does anybody disagree with what's going to happen this evening? Okay, uh, with that said, and I hate to keep using that phrase, I'm sorry, uh, we're going to start one row at a time, and we will work our way across the room, uh, we're going to start with the right-hand side, and again, you have to give your name and your address when you, uh, do come up to speak. We're going to ask that you come up to the podium, uh, come up to the podium, uh, say what you have to say, and, uh, just be seated. This, this...
Did we, uh, we asked the, 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 the...
We, we cannot get the process of, uh, do the process of trying to, uh, answer the questions that you're going to ask of this evening. Uh, we will take everything under advisement, the process is, uh, you're going to be recorded, uh, your comments will be recorded, and, uh, if necessary, we will, um, make, uh, motions, not motions, I'm sorry, uh, make, take your comments and discuss them with the board at a later date. So, who wants to go first? You're in the first row, you go.
Melissa St. Lawrence, three six six, School Lane. Um, first of all, the fact that the use of scripted apologies instead of genuine heartfelt expressions is truly disheartening from this board. Second, I'm here to ask a straightforward question tonight. Previously, you deemed Chief Nichols suitable and competent to serve as acting chief. However, it appears that during this process, you're now suggesting that he is not qualified for the current role he holds and actively uses. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the first row want to be heard? Okay, we'll go to the second row, Mr. Dutra. Uh, please give your address.
Edwin Dutra, eighteen sixty-five Buck Plain Road. I'm a Dayton citizen, retired sergeant with the Dayton Police Department. I've always been proud of the men and women of the Dayton Police Department and the department for which I served for over thirty years. This whole process has embarrassed the town. It should have only been an internal posting. It was flawed from the start, we didn't need to waste time and money on an assessment company that did not provide the service that we paid for. After some research, there may be conflicts with this company. Their job is to rank candidates, not only supply only one candidate. Then, instead of closed-door interviews, the Board of Selectmen interview should have been held in open session at a Board of Selectmen meeting with the finalists, plural, as has been done in the past with the fire chief hiring. In sixty-six years, we have been always promoted from within, as has been done with all other town departments, highway and fire. In fact, two officers in the Dayton Police Department were placed as acting chief and promoted to permanent chief. We do not need to change this process. There have been no major issues since Acting Chief Nichols has taken charge. I have personally seen morale improve and officers work hard under him, providing service and protection. He has installed some great policing options for the department and citizens. He has learned and done an outstanding job after being put in a difficult position. I'm asking the residents right now to raise your hand in support that you would like to see Acting Chief Nichols promoted to permanent police chief. Now, now I'm going to ask the Board of Selectmen, now I'm going to ask the Selectmen to act now and vote and open for review, discuss and act to appoint Acting Chief Nichols.
Who is next? Does anybody else on this side want to go forward?
We don't.
Does anybody else in the third or fourth row want to come forward?
I'll go second.
I, I will get to this side when we're done with the right side. Uh, anybody else on the right side that want to come forward? Yes, sir.
My name's Ron Agia, six thirty-one Hart Street. Um, I've been a resident of Dayton for most of my life. I go back to seeing the chief since, uh, Mason, going way back. Um, George deserves to be the chief of police, he's done an outstanding job in the eight months, he was thrown into that situation, um, when the town was in a very bad state. Most of these people here have supported George, so, uh, I think that you should take that into consideration and make sure that that's part of your job. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on the right side that want to be heard of, heard from?
Joanne Wilson.
Joanne, you're here? Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne, I didn't see you.
Joanne Wilson, twenty fifty-five Wheeler Street, Mr. Chair... Mr. Chairman, I ask that I can yield my two minutes to Ms. Barbara Katavia?
No. Barbara?
Barbara Katavia, 1755 Gleam Street, Dyton. Previous Board of Health Chairwoman. I've had quite the experience with this board when the Board of Health recommended an person to fill an empty seat. I was in Boston, be, having a heart operation, when this board decided not to take our application, threw it aside, and voted for someone else. I'd like to know why that happens.
We're not going to take your answers...
That's an example of this board right here.
That's fine.
We've worked on it plenty of times.
Okay.
There has been also a new applicant on the Board of Health that has no qualifications for that inspector's job. I was told there was only one person that was able to come back. Do you guys? No. Well, then, you just don't take one person if they're a clerk in a bank and know nothing about septic systems.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order, the discussion of a town employee without that town employee being present is a violation of...
I didn't mention any names. I did not mention any names.
Okay. We're, we're just going to keep this to the, the chief of police, please. We're not going to get into...
Oh, I, I agree. George has been fantastic.
Okay.
Known him 15 years, and he's so competent, it's not even funny. I have one other thing to say. How can we truly trust you to represent these residents and to carry forth our joint well-being? For what is good for Dyton, you should stop listening to voting residents, not your own political or private agendas.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody along the back wall that wants to be heard from, on the right-hand side, please? Okay, we'll go to the left, first row. Anybody? No? Nancy, you're up.
Nancy Goulart, 631 Gray Terrace. I'm speaking both as a resident, as a, someone who served on a committee to hire the fire chief. I have experience in this area. Thank God we didn't deal with anything like I'm hearing about and seeing. I don't read Facebook, don't care what's on there, don't listen to the garbage that's out there. My main concern is this is an important position. I think the process that, at least I saw, that you've discussed tonight needs work. I don't want to serve on a committee, but I'm willing to tell you what occurred when we hired the fire chief. It was flawless. It was smooth. It went very well. We had umpteen applicants. We worked with, I, it was Chief Nord, I think he's from Norwell. We ended up with three candidates. It got all the way down to six. He whittled it down to three, and three came before the Board of Selectmen. Good candidates. One of the important things that I remembered from that process was, although we don't have a residency requirement in this town, in effect, we really do, the residency requirement is, if you are on police, fire, or highway, you must live within 10 miles of this town, because beyond that limit, beyond that limit in an emergency, you can't get here in time. I don't know the candidate whose name was announced as being a finalist, but when I saw he was working in Fairhaven, my question was, where does he live? I think he lives in a cushionet from doing searches. You can't get here in 10 miles from a cushionet. I thought to myself, when this gentleman comes up for interview, he's appointed, there's a problem.
Thank you, Nancy.
Now, if you wonder if that...
We're not going to continue, please.
Excuse me?
I said, your timer's up, please.
Okay. I can give you the research I did on the 10-mile thing.
Certainly. Anybody in the second row that wants to be heard?
Sumideras, Chestnut Street. First of all, this town is amazing, and we need to keep it that way. The people of this, this town really care about this town, and it's just wonderful to see that. So, I only have a comment to make. This board had no issue, no issue appointing George Nichols as your, as your acting chief back eight months ago, but now, all of a sudden, he doesn't even get the courtesy, the courtesy of being a finalist. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody in the third row that wants to be heard from?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Brenda Ferrer, Forest Street. My first question is, how do you wind up with one finalist? It's an oxymoron. One person, and the most important thing for the police department to recruit the best is to promote from within. Why would anyone want to join the Dyton Police Department if there's no room for opportunity of advancement? Promote from within would, should always be given preference, but I'd really like an answer to the question, why was there only one finalist?
Thank you. Anybody in the fourth row that wants to be heard from?
We don't get any answers?
No, not this evening. Anybody in the fourth row that wants to be heard from?
There's a gentleman in the green.
Tony Rock, 2855 County Street, Dyton. Been a resident of this town all my life. I was born in this town. A lot of these people here don't know we had a hospital, Mount Hope Hospital. I was born there, 77 years ago. I went through a lot of police chiefs in this town. Started off with Police Chief Menzies, and there was four or five other ones after him. My take on this is, why are you making it so hard? This gentleman that's acting chief is honest, he's fair, and he's qualified. What more do you have to have?
Anybody else in the fourth row? Fifth row? Six, fifth row?
Kristy Caldera, 1740 Oak Grove Drive. I don't want to be up here right now, but I feel like it's important for us all to speak. We're a farming community, or so we were. We're supposed to be a small town with a big heart, and I feel like with all of the money that we have invested in BP and in trade, it is an insult to the men and women that serve on this force that may not have their degree and were not given a chance or a finalist because they're not good enough. They know what this town needs. They have served and protected this town, and the residents are speaking, and I hope that you listen.
I have four kids in this town, 18, 17, three and four. Some of my kids have had interactions with Mr. Nichols. We are in ever-changing time right now, as we all know, and a level of empathy is such a strong quality in someone to have with the way things act. I've experienced it with him in a conversation that was awesome, and I know his qualifications are a crucial part in an ever-changing time that make it so crucial. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're up to the sixth row? Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, you were first. Did you want to go next, the lady with the glasses? Yes, please.
This is going to be rather simple. Heidi Brock, Tamarkin, from 126 Forest Street. And having been in a position of hiring and some very critical positions myself, there's one thing to have what's black and white on a piece of paper, it could get put through a computer, to have it spit out, this person is qualified or this person is unqualified, without ever laying eyes on the individual or speaking to them. Some of it seems a little bit like what's happening with this board. Two points that are really the only ones that matter are, one, the morale of the other officers and people on the police department, because they're the ones that carry forward. They're the ones we see every day, and they follow the leadership and the steps of the position of the chief. The other thing is looking at all my neighbors and hearing from all the neighbors. It's fine to have a board and you sit and you say, okay, we're elected, we're to do this, but there has to come a point when you look up and you say, this is what the people here want. This is a democracy. This is more important than is being given credit to, where people who need to support each other and each other includes a police department with a decent morale to stand behind us.
Okay, anybody else on this side?
I'm a fairly newcomer to this town. I've only been here for six years, but I can tell you from my experience, I came from a place where they decided to hire an outside police chief, and they had many qualified candidates from within, so they hired an outside guy who came in, took their money, and left two years later, but he did damage, a lot of damage to the rest of the officers who felt, I have no upward mobility here, I might as well leave, and they did, in droves. Now, they have a fairly new police chief who worked his way up, and they're starting to gain back some of the officers. Don't be foolish and hire an outside person. You're going to pay for it in the end. We have an acting chief who is doing a great job. Let's keep him. Thank you.
Anybody else in the seventh or eighth, eighth row that we're up to? Sir, we'll take it in just a second, okay? Anybody else?
Kevin Smith, 1147 Center Street. Rightfully so, there's, you know, so many people here tonight that want to support a specific candidate. I just want to make sure that you also don't lose sight of, we still do need to establish a process, because this process is going to need to be followed for other departments or other positions throughout town, so through all this, I hope we arrive at, you know, some solution that doesn't bring us back to where we are today. I've even tossed around the idea that I think that as citizens, we need to establish a petition that any, any candidate that's appointed interim should be automatically a finalist. We can talk about that as friends and neighbors at another time. Just want to echo one thing about, you know, ourselves as elected officials. We may have thoughts and ideas, but at the end of the day, this is who we answer to. I think we've heard everybody loud and clear, and I just want to share one quick thing about George, because I know education was a big part about, of the police chief process. A couple of months ago, I sat next to George at a meeting, and he sat down next to me, and he was telling me about how he had re-enrolled in school, and he had wrote in an essay, and he got such tremendous feedback on that essay that he had submitted to his teacher, and he was so proud of what he had accomplished at this age in life, and I think it just speaks volumes of who he is as a man, that you have somebody that's willing to, you know, carry that torch, lead by example, and continue on, educate himself, and do the best he can for this town.
Anybody up against the wall that wants to be heard? Oh, Mark, I'm sorry, I didn't get to that last row.
Mark Vachico, 2530 Maple Swamp. I, I want to thank each and every one of you individually just for sitting up there and hearing the public input. I know that's, thank you for putting the time in. All I wanted to say is, I don't think it would be a hasty decision tonight for our community to heal, just to make the commitment that we are going to support the Dyton Police Department and promote from within. I think our officers would be in less turmoil, and they could put their best foot forward starting tomorrow, and our community could walk out the door right now and heal, so I don't think that would be a hasty decision, just to box us into saying, we have enough talent in the Dyton Police Department, and we're going to promote from within. Thank you.
Anybody up against this side of the wall that wants to be heard? Oh, sir, I'm sorry, you did put your hand up.
Peter George, 1525 Stanzioni Drive. Maybe the final candidate had more beans in his pile than the other candidates, but it's not about counting beans. It's about a family. The Dyton Police are a family to us. They know us, we know them. Quick story. My son was selling flowers when he was young to raise money to buy a bicycle. One of the newly hired police officers asked him for his sales certificate. So, my son came home crying to me, saying, he won't let me sell my flowers, and I looked at him, and I said, not mentioning names, I said, you go tell the chief, if he wants him to stop selling flowers, come and see me. Officer came back about a half an hour later, he looked at my son and says, I'll buy two. That would not happen with someone from the outside. The police chief at that time, he knows all the residents, he grew up with them, and it's a lot different than taking someone from the outside who doesn't know anything. He goes by the rules. Rules can be bent or swayed. Yes, my son did not have a resale certificate, but the chief let it go by.
Thank you. Again, did anybody on this side of the wall want to be heard? Sure, come on up, please.
Please excuse my appearance. It's a little warm in the corner.
Sure.
Hello. My name is Joyce Flograph. I live at 2249 Winthrop Street in North Dyton, Massachusetts. On behalf of Acting Chief Police Officer George Nichols, I praise him professionally for standing up and getting answers when the police department needs them. I work professionally somewheres, and where I work, things change, and they are not let out into the police departments. They're not let out in other various agencies. He stepped up and called me and asked me what certain things meant. I sent him those codes and everything, and I don't care right now. Who knows? But he stepped up to the plate and questioned everything. He didn't just blow it off. Steve Ferreira, we got a new system where I work. He had to learn it. He questioned it. He came and questioned it, and I helped him to understand it. The other police officers in this town, I'm sorry, I don't have time to mention you all, are fabulous, wonderful, and they deserved everything. are fabulous, wonderful, and they deserved everything. If it wasn't for them reaching out, who the hell knows, excuse my language, what criminal would have walked away and caused more harm in our town? Sorry. He goes above, beyond with the respect, the dignity, and able to hold his head up high in this town along with every other Dayton police officer, town rescue, fire department. Because two weeks ago, I was on my deathbed on my kitchen floor and they were there in a hot beat and a blizzard. And I praise every single one of them for coming to my aid. And because of them, I'm alive today, to tell you the truth. George deserves it more than anyone. And if this town would give the police department...
Does anybody else want to be heard?
The funds, maybe you would be able to get a vote and go to the rivers and help.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll come back and hear from the non-residents, if you don't mind. Thank you. Five-minute recess, please. Yes, Bob.
Bob Perry, 1531 Stanzioni Drive, and I am a resident. I don't know anything about the inner workings of the police department, but over the past eight months, I have observed more speeding enforcement, I have observed more patrols, and I have observed a police presence in the school. This is something that if you go to the Dayton Facebook pages, the residents have asked for in that form, and we've received it in the past eight months. And I think that's a testament to Acting Chief Nichols' leadership. Point one. Point two, Mr. Hull, you mentioned that the firm that was hired to do the search didn't fulfill our obligations. I hope we're not going to pay them. Thank you.
Guys, if you could just give us five minutes, I'd appreciate it. We'll go back to the process. Okay, guys. Guys, we're going to start again, please, if everybody wants to take their seats. Okay, starting on this side of the room, keep in mind you have two minutes. Anybody who is not a resident can be heard. Yeah, I should have brought one. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Patrick Higgins, open meeting law enforcer, P.O. Box 290, Northport, Alabama. The open meeting law was enacted to eliminate much of the secrecy surrounding deliberations and decisions on which public policy is based. That's from the Gilleyone versus School Committee, Southbridge, 1978. I did have some concerns. I didn't know what I was going to say until I got up. I'm glad that we got the residents of the town of Dayton to make their decisions because it made my speech a little different. Peter, you and I go back a long time. We remember Ernie Bell and then we brought in Ralph Lepore. Remember what a mess that was. If you're going to do a search, you should have a screening committee with agendas, meeting minutes, et cetera. And I would encourage that, but after listening to the citizens, your residents here in Dayton and the, you know, I was Burger King for a long time and like you, we hired from within, I'm going to make a recommendation that you make a motion tonight to put on the next agenda to just go ahead and promote Chief Nichols to the Chief of Police. As you are aware, that was not my recommendation before this meeting. My recommendation was go with the search committee and do the whole thing, throw everything out and start fresh. But thinking back to Ernie and Ralph Lepore, I think the right thing for the citizens of Dayton at this time is call a meeting for next week and just put on the agenda to consider the appointment and promotion of Chief Nichols as the permanent chief. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side that's a non-resident or even if you're a resident and you got missed last time? Yes, ma'am.
Danielle Briggs, 39 Morgan Drive, Taunton. I work in the private sector, so I don't know a lot about the public sector and hiring, but I do know that, I was confused about why Chairwoman Mello had said that she was not trained enough to do the hiring process. So I'm wondering why the hiring process had changed because one person didn't know how to do that or wasn't skilled enough in that. Like, why did you change the hiring process and what was it before? And I know that you can't answer the question now because this is supposed to be a comment section, but you didn't allow any input when we were talking about that earlier, so I just figured I'd bring that up. But is that something that you can answer at some point? Okay. All right. And then there was just one other thing that I just wanted, because I know that you guys talked a lot about the background in having to have college degrees for a position like this. Is that a requirement?
No, and can I speak on that real quick? We had actually changed the job description.
Can you stop my two minutes, please, while she talks?
Yes, I'm sorry. We had changed the job description because it didn't require before a higher degree and we did not feel that that was one fair because we knew that there was the possibility that there was going to be Acting Chief Nichols applying and we wanted to make sure that that opportunity was available. And it does say, don't quote me on this, something along the lines that if you are attending school or, it doesn't make a requirement. I'm sorry. Okay, so it says, attending or currently enrolled in associate's degree in criminal justice. So it doesn't require a bachelor's, it says that it's preferred, but I just wanted to clear that up. It was just that you were enrolled in a program.
Am I not on anymore? Okay, so, just so that you know, in January, the state of Massachusetts is eliminating college degree requirements for more than 90% of its job postings, putting more emphasis on skill-based hiring practices. So the Governor Mari Healey signed an executive order only allowing degree requirements to be part of a job posting when it's absolutely necessary to the performance of the role being sought. By doing so, the governor's office said that administration puts the focus on applicant's skills, knowledge, abilities, instead of educational credentials. So as we all heard tonight, we know that the acting police chief right now falls into that category. He has the skills, he has the knowledge, and he has the ability. And I'm hoping that somebody can answer the question at some point as to why the hiring practice changed. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Detective Ryan Richards, Dayton Police Department President, Dayton Police Officers Local 306.
You don't want to do that? Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
I'll give you 1458, Somerset Ave, Dayton. I came up with George Nichols. I started in 2005. I've been here since 2005. I've seen growth start and it brings up morale. We bring new guys in, we get to grow in the police department, okay? I don't want us to make the same mistake that other towns have made by bringing an outside chief. Do your research, look at CCONC, they brought in an outside chief, the morale went down, guys left in droves, droves. There were 42 guys, now they're 27. They closed detectives, they closed SROs. We worked hard to get those positions in there. We worked hard with the school committee to get an SRO in there. And then we got a second SRO, we got a comfort dog, we have a detective, we have a community outreach guy. This is all stuff, this is all growth. You bring in somebody from the outside, growth stops. And I can tell you, guys will look to move. There's no growth, why stay? Why not go out to another community? Why? It's just what it is. So I support George for the Chief of Police as being President of the Union.
Does anybody on this side? Oh, not on, okay.
Nick Barrows, Vice President of the Dayton Police Officers Union. I'm a sergeant in Dayton PD. I support George Nichols as our Acting Chief. Funny story is, I met George back when I was a freshman in high school and I said, one day I want to work with you. And he pushed me and pushed me and pushed me and today I'm working with George. And he pushed me to become a sergeant and I am a sergeant today. I will say, I have a four-year degree, I have a bachelor's degree, and I'll be the first one to say that means absolutely nothing in this profession. Education means nothing. The experience means everything. And George has the experience and he leads us. And not only does he lead us, we lead him. And he won't fail because we won't let him fail. And he hasn't failed. So we stand behind George.
Steve Hathaway, Patrolman, Dayton Police. I stand behind George Nichols.
Aaron Swartz, Patrolman, and I support George Nichols.
Julia Horton, Patrolman, I support George Nichols.
Patrolman Steven Ferrera, I support George Nichols.
Patrolman Tyler Nichols, Taunton BD, I support George Nichols.
Patrolman Todd Kazuski, Dayton PD, I support George Nichols.
Patrolman Alyssa Bennett, I support George Nichols.
Patrolman Nicholas Farrier, I support George Nichols. Just so you guys know, I started my career in this town and then I went to CCONC PD and then I came back here, so.
Sergeant Christopher McGann for the Dayton Police Department, I support George Nichols.
Sergeant Jason McGovern, Dayton Police. I've known George for almost 20 years. I worked in another community, a neighboring community. I came here to Dayton because of George. I took the sergeant's test because of George. I support George Nichols.
Patrolman Ken Almeida, Dayton PD. George Nichols is a big reason why I came here from another agency. I support George Nichols.
Okay, one last time, does anybody else want to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I am a citizen of the town of Dayton.
Just a second, Lenny. Somebody in the back, they said? Yes.
Good evening. Estelle Borges, full disclosure, I am a Taunton City Councilor and Vice Chair of the Police and License Committee, and I also serve on the Bristol Plymouth School Committee. And the reason why I tell you that is because I can't imagine myself as a city councilor and as the Vice Chair of the Police and License Committee, ever hiring outside of your department. I mean, you obviously have great qualified candidates. One has been serving as the Acting Chief for six months, doing a great job. I don't understand why you'd even want to go outside to find a company to help you with that interview process. I will also tell you, as someone that serves on the school committee with Ed Dutra, I am on the hiring committee and we are not going with an outside company at this point. We're going to try to do that in-house first. If that doesn't work out, then we'll go outside and look for a company to help us do that search, but I don't think we're going to have to go there, but if we do, it's there. But in this case, I think you have the right candidate to promote to your police chief permanently. Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Chairman, this evening, we heard loud and clear from the person who will be sitting in my seat come April 6th, how he feels on this matter. I would like at this time to place the name of George Nichols, I make that in the form of a motion, to place the name of George Nichols on the agenda for the March 6, 2024 meeting for a vote to appoint to the position of permanent police chief of Dayton. The motion would need a second. No, no, no.
Hearing no second, the motion does not pass. Just a second. That motion doesn't pass because we can't put it on next week. We haven't even discussed amongst ourselves. Again, you can't yell over each other, please. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kimberly Nichols. I am blessed to be married to George Nichols. I am not here, I am not here to criticize you for not hiring him. I am here to tell you, you have made our lives a living hell for eight months. My husband had a grenade thrown in his lap on June 29th and somebody pulled the pin and he handled it like the leader that he is. And you guys don't care. You don't care. You've made him do essay questions twice, he's done multiple interviews, outsiders have come in, they've done it once. Is that how you treat somebody who's on the department for 20 years with all of this respect? You should be ashamed beyond ashamed. And I'm sorry, my husband will never, ever show his feelings like this because he loves the human race. That's not what you want in a police chief? You have his whole family right here. This is our family. This town is our family. We don't even live in town. And he's this loved? Open your eyes.
Shavv's. I live in Taunton. I will not say my address because I am married to a Taunton police officer. I am the sister of Chief George Nichols. You want a chief that has the respect of the community and the officers, which he has. So how can you sit there and deny him the position? It's just wrong. He has all the respect of both his brothers and the community. To put somebody else in this position that does not have that, the community is going to go down. Before your eyes, and you're going to make the biggest mistake. Chief Nichols deserves this. He has proven it over the last eight months. He has done so much for this department, his whole career being a Dayton police officer. And you're overlooking him like this? You should be ashamed of yourself. You should be losing sleep at night. You shouldn't even be sitting in those chairs.
Does anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Teresa Nichols. I am also the sister of Acting Chief George Nichols. George has been a part of this department for quite a few years. This is all he's ever wanted since he was a little boy. And you're going to sit there and consider bringing somebody else in? Clearly, my sister just made it very clear and everybody else in this place has made it clear that George seems to be the one that you want. He is for the people of this town. It's quite... people of this town. It's quite evident, this town needs to think about each and every one of you up there when it comes time for reelection. I'm sorry, let me reiterate that. Each and every one of you, Mr. Hall has been for active, Acting Chief George Nichols.
Thank you. Anybody else want to be heard? No, I'm not calling on somebody twice, sir.
In regards to not agreeing to what was said, do you have any feedback as to why? Could you give us the feedback?
I can't give you anything. It's not written in front of you.
It's not written in front of you? Could you give us any feedback to give this audience some understanding? Okay, to better us
Absolutely.
understand why there is your opinion?
Sure.
Maybe convince us?
Okay.
Thank you.
Robert Woods, 158 H Street. I can't say anything that's already been said. Most of you know I've been around for a while, involved in politics from day one. And a gentleman came up to me one day when I was new, and he says, "Listen, let me tell you a few things about the town of Dayton." He said, "The people in Dayton would put square wheels on their cars if they could because they love this town. They don't want to go nowhere, they don't want to leave. They don't want no new people coming in. They just want to be indicted, and they want things right." And what else can I say? George is a great guy. I don't think there's one person here who's against George. If they're out, run. Okay? That's all I can say is run. He's a great guy, I know him since he was hired. But you know what? I said it the other day, right? Pat Haddas is the small town with the big hot. Well, we got a big fart over here, okay? And we got to take care of it. You know, I know that they're trying to do the right thing. Every one of these people up here are friends of mine. I like them all. They're good people. Everybody here is good people. If I got an enemy, 158 H Street, show up, okay? I think enough's been said, you know? Do the right thing. It's all we're asking.
Mr. Karen, Mr. Higgins stepped up, he wanted to talk, and you said, "No, he's already been up." Yet I see other people come up two, two times. Why wouldn't you allow Mr. Higgins?
To come up again, but not until everybody else has been heard, sir.
Okay, but you, but why did you allow people to come up twice before him?
Sir, sir.
Okay, but you're going to let him come up?
A hundred people came up. I don't remember everybody that came up.
Okay, you're going to let him come up?
Yes.
Patrick Higgins, Northport, Alabama. Mr. Hall, I think your motion was not properly worded to get a second from one of your colleagues. My recommendation, if you want to make that motion, is to make a motion to put a agenda item on the next agenda to discuss the potential promotion of the, of Chief Nichols to the permanent position. But you have to give them the opportunity to discuss and deliberate on the future of Sergeant Nichols as the permanent chief. I think that's the wording that you need, and hopefully Nicole or Peter will put it on the agenda. I think you're probably going to have to have your meeting here, because I don't think you have the room in Town Hall. But that's, that's my recommendation, is that you put an article on the next agenda to consider the, deliberate and consider the possibility of promotion of Sergeant Nichols to the permanent chief, or any other actions therein. That's my recommendation. And I think it's perfectly legal because you're basically putting an agenda item, you're not discussing it, you're not deliberating on it, and obviously you wouldn't deliberate on it until, until that meeting. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dutra.
I'm going to tell them, Ryan, you want to come up here with me? Come on up. This is Ryan LaBerge.
Yep.
He lives in town, he rides his bicycle.
Damn right I do.
These guys over here keep a watchful eye on him. George Nichols keeps a watchful eye on him, keeps him safe. He is an unknown police officer in this town, believe it or not. And for him to be here says more than anything else. I didn't even get a chance to start. So, you need to support this guy, the people of this town. Doesn't matter who we are, what we are. You need to support them. We take care of people like Ryan. And that's the way it should be, not worrying about getting accreditation or anything else. You need to worry about taking care of our residents in this town, right here. Now, my last thing. You need to do what's right. The employees of this town should be proud to work here, not be disheartened by being overlooked for advancement. You have definitely destroyed the morale of the Dayton Police Department.
Okay, guys, one last time, does anybody else want to be heard? Yes, sir.
Jason Alveda. Police officer in a neighboring community. I've known George for 20 years. One of the reasons that I'm in this career is because of George. So, there's nothing that he hasn't done to better, better the department. So I support George.
Hi, my name is Jessica Machado. I just want to mention, I'm here reporting on this, but I'm speaking on behalf of being a regular resident of the town of Somerset. I have a crystal ball on how this is going to work out. The town of Somerset did this exact same thing. If you want, you can go and look at Somerset Access TV and look at the appointment by the Board of Selectmen of former Chief of Police George McNeil. In that meeting that took place in a middle school auditorium, there were screaming arguments, residents yelling, people being asked to leave on the night that they appointed someone from the outside. There was another officer who should have been promoted to that role. He was overlooked, the board went against them. I can tell you what happened after that if you don't know. All of those selectmen were removed from office. It didn't take long. Furthermore, furthermore, Mr. McNeil did not serve our town properly, and he was removed from his job as Chief of Police. And new selectmen have been brought in. Your job is very fickle. It goes by the people who are here. So I'm just telling you as a resident of a nearby community who already went, went to this whole situation. We currently have a chief who has been in the department probably over 30 years. He's serving our town well. We should have gone with him first, and we didn't, and it took us seven years to get over it. Not only that, but the divide in the town was palpable. People hated each other. Everybody was arguing. You guys are on the precipice of that. You don't have to move forward. You should stop where you're at, look about the history of the neighboring town, and recognize that Dayton could prevent a lot of heartache if you revisit this situation and promote from within. That's all. Thanks.
Bob Perry stands the on dry again. I think everyone in this town has certain expectations of their department chairs and their elected officials. One of them is leadership. I think over the past eight months, George Nichols has clearly demonstrated, and as you've heard from comments here, has demonstrated positive leadership. I think department chairs, department heads should have the respect of their community and their subordinates. You've heard it here tonight. I think we expect achievements and going in a positive direction from our department heads. You've heard examples of that here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, what I'm about to say is not a negative statement, but I think you should consider this, what you've heard tonight, as George Nichols interview for you to promote him to chief.
I will, you recognize me?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll, um, Mrs. Gulat first?
Sure.
Thank you. Nancy Gulat, 631 Gray Terrace. I just want to tell you, selectmen, this isn't the first time the Board of Selectmen has been put on the hot seat because of a police chief. There was a police chief in town who had served a number of years, and it was announced he was not going to be reappointed. The Dayton Rehoboth Auditorium was packed the night that non-reappointment was discussed. The board listened to the input from all the residents. That person was reappointed, served until he retired, and the field behind Town Hall is named in his honor.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would, at this time, like to make a motion to place on the March 6, 2024 agenda, the following. Review, discuss, and act on the promotion of Sergeant George Nichols to the position of permanent police chief.
Hearing no second, that motion will not pass. Now, we got to wrap this up. Let me tell you how we will proceed. Obviously, we underestimated the talent of George Nichols. The, no, please, come on, you guys have all had your chance. We clearly underestimated the talent of George Nichols and the passion behind him. If you don't want the procedure to take place, which is what we've done, we've heard you, without a doubt. We, as a board, have to do what's best for the town. If George Nichols is, guys, you all had your chance. You've all had your chances, our chances to finish. Sir, please leave. All right, fine. The evening is over, so let me finish. I like George Nichols too. Like I said, we underestimated, and we probably erred along the way. What I can say to you is, we will look at it, and we will say, if George qualifies, we can't promote him just on, we can't just take tonight and say George Nichols is the next chief. There is, there is a process that we have to finish. Like I said, like I said, we erred in what we had done up until today. And we will take a look at this, we will go forward with this. Unfortunately, it's not going to happen next week. If it happens in three weeks, I promise you, I promise you that George will be given a fair, fair, fair hearing. And if he passes with, with the input from, from tonight, we will, we'll make him the next police chief. I wish you guys knew what we knew. There's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of rumors out there that, there's more, there's more rumors out there that unfortunately we cannot respond to. We've heard your com, no, Ed, you had your chance. You had your chance, Ed. We will seriously look at appointing George. That's the best I can say. If there's a good chance that he will get elected, appointed fire, police chief, we will take every opportunity to give him that, that fair hearing. That would be up to George. So, at this point, we're going to close tonight's hearing. If, the next hearing will probably be in two weeks for us, possibly three weeks. And I promise you, at that point, we will not be taking public input for this all over again, but George will be given the fairest of all shots to be the next police chief. Is there a motion on the floor to end this?
Can we have one more resident?
One, one more resident, sure.
My name is Nancy Valcorva Olney. I'm a Taunton resident. George is my brother-in-law. What I find ridiculous is, when crap hit the fan, and something happened with the former chief, he was all qualified to walk into a field of crap roses and smooth everything out. That was okay. But now, all of a sudden, he's not qualified. I think that's crock. If anybody has heart, it's that man. Not because he's my brother-in-law, because he's my brother by marriage.
Okay.
But to step in and take over when everything went crazy, he was good for that. But he's not good now. Right?
I'm not saying that.
No, I know you're not saying anything because you have nothing to say. Like, you have nothing to say to anyone. You have no answers for anyone. You should be ashamed of yourself. And if you can't, if you don't know the hiring process, why are you on that position?
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn this meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this, oh, did you see that? Okay. This, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Sorry, the meeting has ended.